The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is 5:30 on Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, and I'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and I would ask for any additions or corrections, or if not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Your Honor, I've got a few changes to the agenda. We have to add under the consent agenda approving the appointment of Amy Baldwin as the Port Authority Executive Director. City code calls for the Port Authority to appoint an executive director and then the city council to give that a stamp of approval. So we'll add that on the consent agenda. And then we need to remove number three under the consent agenda, and I'll defer to Rolf Niklomar, our city attorney, as to explain why that is.
Thank you. There really isn't any action required of the council in regards to a preliminary plat. You're not being asked to make approval or approval on a final plat. And from what I've looked at, it's just a preliminary plat. There's a lot more that's involved with the plating process by title examinations and other entities that are consulted in regards to the approval of a plat. So we do not have a final plat that's being presented to you. I suspect you will be presented with a final plat at a later date, but the city has received a preliminary plat that I believe the building inspector, zoning administrator, has shared with the council, and we'll be discussing that further with the property owners about concepts and concerns, if we have some concerns. But from a plating perspective, it's really the issue is how they want to divide up their lot, what goes on the lot. The regulatory part is handled through the permit process, which I don't believe we have any permits or anything that have been pulled or requested in that regard. So there's still preliminary early, and more information will come. But I know that there's been some concerns, and I believe Mr. Hicks has some concerns he would like us to keep in mind.
Your Honor, do we want to discuss that now, or do you want to put it under other business?
I think it's being pulled from the agenda, so if you want to talk about it now, then we want to talk about it later.
I think a couple of concerns that, obviously, the property is, we're talking about the Tower Road apartment building on the north side of Tower Bridge on the east, in the east side. I know that a number of neighbors and residents in that area have passed comment about, you know, the grass and also the fact that it still looks like a building site. And I know that I've talked with April, and April's had some conversations with, obviously, both Herzog and Unique, but I think it's getting to a point where somehow or other we need to put a little bit more teeth into it. I mean, there's, you know, I think we have a dumpster regulation that requires dumpsters be surrounded. You know, the dumpster's not, and there's garbage around there, there's concrete still, there's piles of dirt, there's wood, piles of wood, there's rafters. I think at some point, plus, I would also like to know if the car park is finished, because, you know, technically, there's meant to be, if it's a 36 building apartment, there's meant to be one and a half times that. And I know a couple of residents have said that there's insufficient parking, and they end up parking on the gravel in the road on the opposite side of the back, on the east side. So the building's kind of, and it's a gateway to the city, and, you know, at least we've got rid of the thistles, but there's a big mound of kind of dirt that had bulldozers sitting in it forever, and that's kind of covered in weeds, too.
I'm gonna say that with your first statement, that appears still that it is a construction zone, and you are 100% correct, Anthony. It is not a complete project at this time. A final CO has not been issued on the property, so that doesn't mean that everything, that there are no life safety issues there, but it's the site grading, the Corps of Engineers still needs to provide some sign off for the retention ponds. There's also a building permit that would need to be issued for a garage. So this item, you know, they are being worked through with the engineering department. But like I said, your first statement is, it appears that it is a construction zone, and it is still a construction zone, and it's not been a closed out building permit yet.
So is there occupancy, I mean, it's permitted to be occupied, then?
It has been issued a certificate of occupancy for occupancy of the building, but the site has not, the complete certificate of occupancy has not been issued for that site. So with that being said, is a temporary CO can be issued as long as there's not life safety issues. So a parking lot is not a life safety issue, but there's parameters put on the certificate of occupancy, the temporary one, that there's timeframes for that work to be done.
So do we have an idea of the timeframes?
I'm gonna look at Andrew and ask him, because you've met with Brian. I know Brian Yavero, and he's not here this evening. He's been working closely with them regarding their civil, specifically the mound of dirt, the tall grass, the weeds. They have been sent notices for those nuisance violations, because they still need to maintain it.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not prepared to give an update. I'm in the email thread that I've seen, so it's actively being discussed, but I haven't seen an update in the last couple of weeks, so I don't know where we're at.
Could we get an email and send out to council on it, on where we're at?
Yep, I'll visit with the city engineer and come up with the status report on that.
Could I follow up on that, Ben, just to clarify? Your Honor, the planning commission met and approved a preliminary, whatever you call it.
Preliminary plat?
Plat and subdivision request in R4, right? So now, we're gonna hear it in the future. Four of the seven members were there, three were not there, the planning commission, as I see from the minutes. Seems like a really big issue. Shouldn't this go back to the planning commission before it comes again to us? Because that's a preliminary, you said we don't need to, we're not gonna approve that, but there's a number of issues here. And I had a question, too, about the width of the right of way, because that's, we've talked about going west with trails and stuff there, and I haven't seen any maps on exactly what we have for those trails. And I know there's some relocation stuff and some stuff going on with the road and, you know, the four buildings that are, but I just think it's such a big project, right at the entrance, I drove by there again, you know, a few hours ago, looking at that. That's gotta be done right. And, you know, we prayed about Houston, they're the one city in the U.S. that just basically said, "No zoning, nothing, we just build anywhere, do anything," you know? You get a disaster, and, but I think we should really let this go to the planning commission again with a full understanding of that there's a lot of issues here that have to be solved. I'm just afraid we don't want to breeze through it, it's a pretty important location, so. I don't know how that works in the city staff, I just want to suggest.
Did you make that motion?
Can I make that a motion?
Please.
All right, I'd like to make that a motion, that because of the low attendance of the planning commission, as well as the importance of this project and the amount of financing and everything it has, that we would allow this to go back to the planning commission before we have to act on it, because I believe we're gonna be micromanaging or something. That's a big motion, back to the planning commission.
Is there a second to that motion, Tom?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Any comments, Rolf?
The comments are, is that you have the authority to refer this back to the planning commission, which they should take it up, and they should take it up quickly, because you do have to have some final resolution on this thing within 120 days of receipt of the application. So we have time, but we just need to keep the 120 days in mind that there should be some action by the council, one way or the other, some final action within that timeframe.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same time, motion carries.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have one question. April, you've had letters go out to them on the grass and the weeds and stuff, and they haven't taken care of it?
Correct.
Have we gone, are we going to go in there and take care of it and bill them?
They would have asked aye on that, but yes, that's our standard policy, is we send a letter seven days, and then we send over a contract, not more.
I'm not sure where we're at in the seven days, but I'll check it right away in the morning and get them on it if.
If not, we should get in there and take care of it.
Any other comments on that issue?
Okay, if not, back to the agenda. So we're removing item three, we're sending that back to the planning commission, and we're adding item eight, which is Amy Baldwin as the Director of the Port Authority. Is there any other additions to the agenda, if not a motion to approve the amended agenda? Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Brent, thank you. In favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same time, motion carries. Under the committee of the whole recap, Chief of Police was asking for a full rundown of the budget since he wasn't here. It's real high level. And Bill, maybe you could just give the public the timeframe of.
That's a good one.
Hey, Kyle, this is for you.
I'm listening.
Per the mayor's request, we'll just do very high level here, but letting know the budget calendar going forward, so the public is aware when we're coming back with it. So tonight, at the committee of the whole, we did go through the entire proposed levy and budget for 2018, and we'll come back to the next council meeting then and ask the city council's approval on that proposed levy and budget, because we need to get that to Ottertail County by the end of September. And then we'll also be setting at that next council meeting, the public meeting, in which we'll go through the budget again in December, and then allow the public to have comment on that. That meeting would be on December 4th, so that's our first council meeting in December, and it needs to take place at 6:00 P.M. or later. So that's when we'll hold that official budget meeting, and then we need to get that to Ottertail County by the end of the year, then, by December 29th will be that, be that date. Looking at, we'll be looking at a proposed expenditure budget for the city of $44,407,407. And proposed property tax levy of $5,978,541, which is a 6.73% increase over the 2017. So that's the two numbers we're gonna look at. However, between now and the next meeting, our tax levy committee will probably get back together, discuss a few things. We had some good discussions on the budget, and, you know, we may come back with some tweaks to that and adjust our budget a little. But we'll then highlight those for you as the city council at the next council meeting, certainly before we ask you to approve that, so.
And this is a public document, so if people want to come to City Hall and look at this, or is online?
We'll actually, we'll be putting that on the website, too. So I don't know, we'll probably hold off just a minute, let the tax levy committee get back together before we put this up on the website, and then have to change it and put it up again, if that sounds okay with you as a council. So we'll regroup in the next week or so, but when we bring that to the next council meeting, we'll get it up on the website right after that as well. But it's a public document, so.
Just so the public knows, if they have specific concerns or questions before it's certified by this council on the 29th day, there's plenty of time for them to get this information and get.
Correct. Yeah, we've got some copies here tonight, too, so certainly.
Just one thing to remind them, that it can, once we put that in place at 6.7, if that's where it comes in, we can lower it, but we can't raise it.
Thank you, that's always a good point, for the public to know that we're setting it here, always have that opportunity by December to bring it down.
That's a dollar amount.
Correct.
The 6.73 will actually, if there's any increase in 2017 of the property value in the city, that will automatically go down.
Exactly, but it can't go, it can't go up.
Yep, the levy we set in September, you can never go higher than that.
Great. Okay, any other comments, questions from Bill? Thank you, Bill. Is that sufficient?
Yep, I'm good, thank you.
All right, there are no public hearings this evening. Under awarding of bids, we will need a resolution awarding a bid for public improvement 5310, which is the Vernon Avenue Street Improvement Project. Brian Yavaro's not here, but I believe, if you remember, we approved that contingent upon the bids coming in below $200,000, and as you can see, your packet, it did come in under $200,000. Do you have any comments?
Just real quickly, we received four bids on the project. Central Specialties Inc. out of Alexandria was the low bid, $191,332.84. So we are under that $200,000 threshold, and tonight, we're just looking for formal approval of that one more time, I guess.
Is there a resolution?
Thank you, Anthony.
Jim?
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Under petitions and communications, we'll need a resolution acknowledging the retirement of Brian Olson, and you have a copy of the resolution in your packet, I'm just gonna read a portion of it. Whereas Brian Olson has submitted his intent to retire effective September 11th, 2017, and whereas Brian began his employment with the city of Fergus Falls on September 4th, 1980, as a liquor store clerk, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept Brian Olson's resignation and to thank him for 37 years of dedicated service to the city of Fergus Falls. Someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Justin, thank you. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hoover.
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 Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hoover.
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 Yes.
Fish.
The resolution is approved. There are no board, committee, and department reports that I know of. So we'll move on to item number L, which is reports from staff and administrative officers. Item number one is a library renewal project update. I think we'll start with an update on the fundraising efforts. Jennifer Smedstead?
Do I get that out of order?
We're fine, Your Honor. Thank you.
I've done everything else wrong this evening.
I think you're doing great. Thanks very much, Your Honor, and members of the council. It's great to be here this evening to provide you with an update on our fundraising efforts. You may have received a notice, and I don't want to take the air out of Aaron's sails here, but the city did receive word just recently on that they are the recipient of $200,000 from the Otto Bremmer Trust, payable over a period of two years, and so long as there's matching of $100,000 of private fundraising. So again, $200,000 total over a two-year period, so long as $100,000 is privately fundraised. So you may recall, stepping back, that we've raised 2.65 million, and this would bring us, if we're able to receive or raise the $100,000, to 2.95. So we're closing right in on that $3 million target. We're pleased and excited to do that, especially off of our exciting groundbreaking ceremony. So the energy level is high, and this news is tremendous, and I think you have another topic before you with regards to the construction grant as well, and that would be a positive step forward. Any questions?
I'd just like to say thank you for your continued efforts, and that's great news.
Thank you. Very much.
Did you want to give us the financing update, Aaron?
Should I go ahead?
Bill? I'm sorry, okay.
So, and pretty much just reiterating email that I sent out to all of you a week or so ago, but about financing, right now, we have over $2 million in cash in our city funds. West Central Initiative sent over, started the first payments of those fundraising dollars coming over, so just about $600,000 we received. So bringing our cash to, you know, towards the end of August at $2,580,000. So we're gonna, of course, start using that now to cash flow the project, and then we're looking at our bonding scenarios for that, talking about this library grant and the timeframe of that, and, you know, receiving those funds at the end of the project. So actually, just corresponding with our bond consultant again today, we will probably look at issuing bonds in 2017 yet, get those done. We were kind of going back and forth, should we wait, see if we get the grant, and then issue them early in 2018, and now I'm leaning back towards getting it done now. So we'll probably come to one of your next council meetings to kind of start that process of events for issuing bonds, and then we can build in some parameters. If we receive grant dollars, further grant dollars from that state construction grant, we could pay off some of those last maturities of that bond, call those in a little bit early. So we're looking at those options, and we'll be bringing those back to you. But good news is, we have over $2 million in cash that, you know, we can start cash flowing this project, and then we'll get those bonds issued and kind of get all that sewn up. So any questions with that?
Thank you, Bill. Next item is a resolution authorizing the city of Fergus Falls to apply for state library construction grants. Smith, the library director.
Thanks, Mayor, thank you, council members, good evening. So library construction grant, this was approved during the last session as an option for us to apply for some additional funds for this project also. There is a memo in your packet, and looking for authorization to prepare that grant application and submit it. We would apply or make a request of $1 million, that's the most we could request. It is a competitive program, so we're throwing our hat in the wing, and we'll see who else throws their hat in the ring, too. And it is an extensive grant, I've been working on it over the past week, so there's a few hoops, but I think, I think we should, you know, go ahead and do it and see, and see where we, where we get. The applications are due on September 29th. Can I tell you about it? If, the other piece that Bill was speaking to, if we were to receive funding, we would be basically paid back in one lump sum after the project is complete. So that's kind of looking at the bonding scenarios and how that might work for us with this. So we're taking that into consideration, too, since we'd be reimbursed and have that one lump sum, depending on the award that we could possibly receive, so. With that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer some of those, but I know you've got the memo in front of you, so.
Do you even have any questions for Aaron? If not, is there a?
I will offer the resolution.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second it.
Scott, second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Hoover.
Yes.
Fish.
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 Resolution is approved. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Under old business and unfinished business, item number one is the discussion on the audio and visual equipment for city hall council chambers. I think Bill's gonna lead us through this discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not looking for any action from you guys tonight on this, just want to give you a little update. At the last council meeting, I was gone on vacation, but I understand there's probably some concerns brought up. So we're looking into some of those concerns. Sandy Cunningham, our Assistant Finance Director, is checking with some other cities and some other counties that have put in this system. You know, to get some real-time data, I guess, of what's their experience, how's that going, I'd rather us back off a little bit right now and take our time, do it right. So she's exploring that. Tony Neville, our IT Director, is also speaking with Lakes Country Service Co-op to kind of, you know, let's talk to some other customers that have dealt with this. The contractor that would be installing this is the contractor that put in our video system here, and that's when, you know, we've been having very good experience with that, but rather cover our bases to make sure we don't make any errors in judgments, so.
Your Honor, yes, Scott?
I'd just like to have Jim included on that with Tony, too, looking at it, and can talk with Jim, because he's the one to be running it, I assume, is that right?
Oh, certainly.
So I'd like to have his input on it, too.
Yep, and we've been talking with Jim on it as we've started down this path, so, yep, those systems all got to work together, so.
And timeframe, Bill, did you say, if you did, I missed it?
You know, we'll probably try bring something back to you at the next council meeting, maybe?
Okay, so we're moving on, all right, thanks.
Yes, Your Honor. When we originally brought this up, I remember introducing this, that we wanted to make sure we looked at our sound system.
Yep.
And then there was brought back, I believe, that we were gonna look at also the audio, right, visual?
Correct.
So it was together.
Yep.
And my concern was that, not that it's a bad idea to look at it, and I know you want to do it right, but my concern was that we take care of the issue of the audio, a lot of people had talked to me about this. So, and I realize there's some kind of a gain here in percentage of the total cost, but I guess I'm concerned that we are not taking care of the audio in a timely manner. It's been an ongoing problem for, you know, quite a while. So I'm, I guess I'm raising the issue, I don't have a motion at this point, but I just wonder if any of the other council members feel that we should go ahead with the audio and then keep checking on, and make sure we get the video, maybe if we do the same, the same contractor, they will still give us a break if we, you know, do it two parts. But I, I just think we should get on the audio and get it done, so.
It seemed to me, oh, go ahead, Bill. It seemed to me that if we're thinking, if we're talking about the next council meeting, let's, let's staff bring it back to the next council meeting, and if we don't have, if we can't combine the two at that point, then we maybe won't look and go ahead with the audio. Is that, is that going on?
Yep, I mean, you're right, and we are delaying this tonight, so we're definitely putting a step of delaying on this, but, yeah, you would have every, you know, we have the proposal in hand, so you could accept it if you chose to, but.
The PEG access board has approved their portion of the video to go along with it. So right now, we're just trying to figure out what's the best, you know?
Want to make sure we're purchasing the right system, is what we want to double check, because.
the new demolition cell, and the closure of Phases 1 and 2, and to accept Houston Engineers' Professional Services' proposal for the design and construction administration in the amount of $103,500 for Phases 1 and 2 and 3A at the landfill. We've discussed this before. Andrew, did you want to just give an overview?
Yeah, Your Honor, members of the council, nothing has changed from the last time that we discussed this. We were unable to make it work with the county based on some circumstances beyond anybody's control. And Councilmember Hicks reached out and wanted to put this back on the agenda for consideration because of the timeliness of when our current demo cell is going to fill up and then also the, the bidding period with favorable bids coming up here in these months. So I, I guess I would defer to Councilmember Hicks and what his thoughts and concerns are, but nothing has changed from city staff and as far as cost estimates or any progress on this project. So we're still looking for the original action if the council wishes to proceed in that direction.
The original recommendation was to proceed, correct?
That's correct.
Anthony, did you want to?
Sure, Your Honor. I think my concern was that, obviously, you know, the original reason for the delay was to put it on the website that we would obviously be increasing the disposal rates to accommodate the new cell. And, you know, there was concern that that would inhibit particularly more contractor-type work going on in the city. But, you know, the default is if the city doesn't do this, the current landfill demo site will be filled probably January, February of next year, so there will be no place to go with demo material. And then I think we have to look on the backside of the general public that takes the small loads of demo. The reason for this additional cost is obviously due to regulation. It's not due to the city. And I think, you know, we, it's part of the service that we offer, we, so we have to decide if we truly want to be in the, you know, garbage business or not. And I think we, we have an obligation and we can build a cell on this site. And obviously, as long as the charges for filling it are appropriate, then we go ahead. This, this fee is only for services and proposal of the design, so outside of $103,500, it's not a commitment to physically build the cell. You know, it's going to put together the, the phases of it. And I'm concerned that obviously as we get, you know, closer into winter, because that's coming, the obligation or the period for construction gets narrower and narrower. Obviously, if we have a good fall, we might still be able to do this. But the new landfill site obviously has to be clay lined and then it has to have certain drainage that captures, you know, the, the water from it so that we can treat that. And I think, you know, it's something we, we need to do. The MPCA is obviously extremely challenging to work with currently. This is the first permit, obviously, they've issued for a cell of this type. So I think we have an obligation to the balance of the citizens that don't want to drive half a pickup load on a Saturday morning to Hanning. You know, plus, the reality is, is that the county's dumping Hanning will fill up very quickly and they too will probably noticeably start to put the charges up because their site is filling. And, and they've got to, they, they have to recover finance to do their next cell. So I would make, is it a resolution or, yeah, the resolution that we accept Houston Engineers' Professional Services' proposal for design and construction administration in the amount of $103,500 for Phases 1, 2, and 3A.
Thank you, Anthony. Is there a second to the resolution?
I'll second that and I want to make a comment. I think, I think we're kind of between a rock and hard spot. I mean, we, we need to have that cell. A city our size needs to have a place to bring demo. When, when you talk about how much it's going to cost for people to bring it in it, bring the debris into it, that's going to be in the bids that the people make on the contracts. I mean, it, it's not going to be any further money out of anybody's pocket other than the homeowner or whoever's building the building. It's going to go into that original bid. So like I say, I think we're between a rock and a hard spot and, and we have to do it.
Thank you, Jim.
Just another comment to Mr. Hicks's recommendation. The, the question at the last council meeting, one of the concerns was, would we lose business from local contractors doing that work? In this period of time, did we hear from any of those contractors as far as if this would change their?
We've got calls being made to contractors doing a survey, and so far, I think we've got five responses from contractors, and I'm not sure what the results.
Most of the responses were no or none, that it would just change the bids.
Yeah, that's what I figured. Okay. Thank you.
That's kind of where I was going with it too. I mean, were we, was something being put in effect to find out what these contractors would do? Because we were worried, if we go ahead and invest this money, then all of a sudden they start taking their business somewhere else, then we have to try to recruit that money somewhere. And he just pretty much brought up the same thing I was thinking about.
Sure. Any other thoughts, questions?
Rod?
I, personally, my, you know, my thoughts are, I don't think anyone has a crystal ball on this, but with the overreach of the MPCA and, and the regulations increasing in the amount of cost, I'm thinking that, that cooperative county municipal here is really important. I'd love to be able to have the meeting. It's regrettable we can't because of the circumstances beyond our control. So I understand Councilmember Hicks and others' eagerness. I'm wondering if it'll make any difference with the winter coming. Now, at this point, it's too late to actually get it done anyhow. I would love to have a meeting with the county. I'm just wondering if we could, if there's any way we could get that meeting in before we make this final decision, because once we commit to that, we are going to spend for it. And so, and we're the first city that get, the MPCA gets to have in their sites with the new regulations. So we're really, you know, I think we're, we are in a rock and hard place in many ways and both sides of the coin. So I just would like a little restraint on it, and I don't know if our engineer could tell us, he's not here, but if it matters if we make this decision in this meeting or the next one, so.
I was just going to say, Your Honor, members, that the city engineers under the, the thought that we could still bid this this fall, and construction may or may not begin, but completion would be spring or summer. So he's, he's thinking from a bid standpoint, if we proceed, we're going to get favorable bids this time of the year because of projects winding up that contractors already working on. So I think we could potentially get that done this, this year. I, I agree with you, Rod. I would love to visit with the county, and we have visited with the county over the last year and a half a few times on this, but nothing since the, the last time we discussed this as a council. If we delay it much longer, we likely will miss out on this bid season. So, I mean, I guess I just reiterate what everybody else says, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place and.
I, I think it's, it's the same as due diligence. You're only spending $103,000 to do the design and construction administration phase. You're not actually signing up for the construction. So I think there's still time to have that meeting with the county. But I also would say that we shouldn't be dictated to by the county, you know, we're the largest city in Otterhill County, so, you know, we should make the decisions that are best for our residents first and then for the county second. And our residents would have to drive to Hanning, which obviously is not something that a lot of them want to do. This matter got brought up, obviously, at least two council meetings ago, and we're the ones reaching out to contractors to ask them the questions, and most of them are saying it's not going to affect their business. And I think that was the concern. So I think we've got answers to the concerns and, you know, we, we, we'll see if we get favorable bids by doing this today. You know, and, you know, another part of this is that, you know, there's going to be removal of some of the buildings at the curb right. We will end up taking that to Hanning if we don't have a construction demo cell in Fergus Falls, which might, which may still, still happen. But, you know, we are short of demo. I mean, if you go out to the landfill site today, we got an extension to go up on the demo cell and, you know, we're pushing a look on the way that that looks and is, is, you know, to the point whereby it's got to start closing it up. And we're, we're out, we're getting out of space, so. And I, and I will also tell you that the MPCA, you know, the longer we delay it, just because they've given you a permit, does not actually mean that they can't change the rules on a permit before you actually build it. So when you go back and you actually want to build it, they will, they, they have the right to change the rules, so they could get tougher.
Ooh. Thanks. Go ahead and.
I feel strongly about it, Rod. I wanted that.
I wonder if we could hear from our commissioner about timeframes and regionalism and.
Mr. Rognes?
Mayor and council, we have had a meeting as the public works for Otterhill County, and we were able to glean some information from Lynn here. And the conversation for us is still quite preliminary, but I will say this, that it forced us to step back and look at this more on a regional basis. Right now, a lot of this demolition material is also going to winter. And once it's out of our county, it's into North Dakota, it, it changes some of the dynamics as well. So, you know, what we're going to be able to offer the city really is something that's probably somewhat in the future. We will be looking at more recycling and separation of materials. That's also going to have additional cost to it, but we feel to be environmentally responsible as a component of it. So we're looking at recycling, crushing of concrete and block material, recycling the steel out at all possible, and possibly looking at opportunities that are not fleshed out at all, but trying to reduce the burnables to steam. And you can see now we're talking about a big picture. It's well down the road, and what you're looking at is just a month or two or three away. So I think what we are going to be looking at is going to be more comprehensive, and what you're trying to do for your citizens is more localized.
I agree.
Is that, does that answer any questions for you as far as where the direction might go? And we welcome the opportunity to, to visit with you. In fact, you know, we're still open to putting a meeting there. I think I explained to you what was happening most recently, but we still had a meeting and we did discuss this, and the conversation went in the direction I just reported.
Could I ask a question? Lee, we had mentioned when the MPCA was here, again, brought up, and I brought it up that about a demo sorting kind of machine. We have the sorters for the recycling. They have demo sorters, but it's too big for us as a city future again. But, so if we go ahead with this, basically, we can still stay on track with discussions with you on the long term about the big picture of this regionally.
I think what I could, you know, respond to that, Mr. Speedo, is the, whatever comes of the future will probably extend the life opportunity for your cell by re-sorting materials out of it that could be otherwise sorted into another, another stream. And I think that's what I hear you saying is, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have one question. You know, the burners for steam, if we take most of the garbage out and put that elsewhere, what are they going to have left to burn to make their steam? The recyclables that we're going to be doing with all the paperboard, all the junk mail, all that kind of stuff, what's going to be left for them to burn to make steam?
Are you talking about the changes going forward?
The changes going forward, yeah. What, what, what are you looking at for?
Well, we have contracts in place and dumping fees associated with that. And I think you're talking about a demolition cell.
Right.
But you're not talking about a disposal cell for your, for your, for your burnables.
No, no. What, what, what I'm talking about is if, if we take all of the newspaper out, all the paper products out of the garbage, recycle them, what's left for the burner?
Do you know what percentage you are at on recyclables right now?
Eight percent of our citizens participate.
And of your?
No, not the percentage. I don't think, the 25% is what we would gain from the study we did.
I guess what, the question really comes back to be more directly for Mr. Fish, is if you go to the single stream, which Otterhill County is embracing, and eight percent of your citizens are recycling, what percentage do you think that'll be then? I guess is the answer.
There's still going to be a lot of people not recycling, is what you're saying, so there'll be garbage to burn.
And a lot of it's not recyclable that's being burnt. You should come up there and see what we get.
I think, to Rod's point, I think it was 25% if I remember correctly, was the amount that was in there currently that would be taken now.
Would be able to remove with the single sort of, and then we, you know, we're expecting a much higher participation rate with the single stream.
I think your question is well founded, but I don't, there's, there's still, still a lot of people not recycling.
So it sounds like the conversation tonight, is there, yes, thank you, Lee. There's, there's going to be opportunities to partner with the county in the future, but right now we have to look out for our, our short-term interests of our residents and the demolition cell, so. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Effort.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Cooper.
Yes. Resolution is approved. Item number three is a resolution approving the city entering into a purchase agreement for the former dairy property. And I believe that we'll first call on Kent to go over the purchase agreement and then Steve Erickson as well to talk about. Kent, did you want to talk about the changes to the purchase agreement that we received this evening?
Sure. Good evening. Last, it would have been Thursday in the council packet, there was a updated purchase agreement that was prepared between the Chaney's and a working group representing the city and myself and the attorney representing the Chaney's. By the time the agreement that had been reviewed and presented to the Chaney's attorney had gone into the packet, he had not had an opportunity yet to review it. And so he did have a chance to review it and on Friday had sent some comments. And then Andrew forwarded that updated mark draft to the council on Friday evening, I think it was. And the changes that I'll maybe cover first that were suggested, some of them were clerical, and those aren't really worth commenting on. A few of them were substantive, but from the legal view, on page nine in section eight regarding the representations and warranties of the property, the requests really in the context of this arrangement, given that the, the property is probably going to be reduced to a greenfield site, and, and given the location in the city, the, the requested revisions, which consists of a couple of provisions being deleted, were acceptable from the legal view. It's not changing the risk from, from the city's perspective. And other than that, there was really no substantive change. The, the way that we had gotten to an updated draft of the purchase agreement is that the working group had met after the last council meeting, had created an approach to see if we could reach an updated agreement with the sellers. Smaller representation of the working group met with the sellers and the realtor, kind of hammered out six, seven bullet points that were then used to adjust in the agreement to try to bring the parties together with an appropriate approach to due diligence regarding the site and also appropriate allocation of risk of, of maybe the unknowns, we'll call it, that can't be discovered. Really, the core approach of this remains, which is the city is given 120 days to do due diligence and review on the property, including through the Braun InterTech proposal. That due diligence would be coordinated with the sellers, and at the end of that due diligence period, the city would still have the ability to move along with the acquisition based upon the due diligence and based upon your further development of the pro forma and the business case for it. So you do have the right to close on it and you also have the discretion to not close on it. The sellers have a little bit of the same right, but not as broadly stated as for the city in the sense that if the due diligence process results in site remediation costs that they would have to pay for in excess of $75,000 on top of the tank cleanup that they've already agreed to do, they would have the ability to cancel the purchase agreement in light of having unanticipated costs. In that instance, they would share 50% of the due diligence costs, including the Braun InterTech estimated costs of $66,000 and some change.
Kent, is it, it's still accurate that if the, if the two parties do the joint due diligence together and we do end up closing on the property, that then they would share in that 50% of the due diligence in that instance as well?
Yep. And that's a business point improvement.
Right. Which is, which is a different concept than we discussed before doing the joint due diligence to truly get to any issues that are on that property.
Yep. So you're sharing the analysis? Yep, so you're sharing the analysis, and you're sharing the cost if it closes. If the city would elect to not close on the property, the city would cover 100% of the due diligence costs. And that may be reflected on the fact that the city's got broad discretion on whether or not to do it, and the sellers have a very tight opportunity to be able to do that. So, again, from the legal view, this allows the city to complete the due diligence, allows the city discretion to move along to a closing after the due diligence period, and does make some adjustments based upon the timeline to not put a closing date by the end of the year, but to put a closing date that's not more than 30 days after the 120-day due diligence period. So, it's about 150 days from the date this agreement is signed to complete due diligence, and if you elect to do so, close the arrangements. So, that's an update to the changes that were made from the Thursday version to the Friday version that you saw Friday night. I can answer any questions from the legal view. I think Steve has a report on the discussions that went on with Mr. Chaney and the realtor.
Did you just want to touch on one more point, Kent, if you would? And that's the other main discussion within that negotiating group was the as-is-where-is versus the original unlimited indemnity, if you will, and the compromise that was reached there and how that, the language around that.
Yeah, so originally, the purchase agreement did not contemplate an as-is-where-is conveyance when, meaning you get what you get, and they're not necessarily providing any warranties behind it. So, when the agreement came back from Mr. Chaney's attorney, it had introduced the as-is-where-is concept. And what we did was we looked at that and decided that that was not acceptable from the city's view. And so, we took the approach of trying to identify what they would stand behind with special warranties and representations, like title. They're going to stand behind title. So, that's not as-is-where-is. But then, when we got into some points regarding like environmental, where the parties can engage in their due diligence, that's where they wanted to limit their exposure. So, from Mr. Chaney's perspective, as I'm understanding it, he said that he has no problem standing behind what he is actually aware of during the course of his property ownership, but he did not want to be responsible for things that happened after closing. So, for instance, if there's something that is on the property right now that in its current state is just fine, and if the city or its contractors would go in and exacerbate the situation or disturb the situation and it becomes a hazardous condition, he wants the city to bear responsibility for that. He also does not want to have responsibility for things that he doesn't know about that happened before his ownership. And what he's offered up there is the ability for the city to take the indemnity agreement that he has with the Dairy Farmers of America that would allow the city to address anything that was on the property before. And again, that's only if you don't find it during your due diligence. So, the goal is to come up with a comprehensive due diligence, do site evaluation, and try to figure out as much of the unknown as possible. But there still is, you know, potential of something coming up after the fact, because you're not going to conduct due diligence on every square inch of that property. That's just not commercially reasonable.
But it does speak to the, in my opinion, the importance of doing that due diligence jointly with the owners so that all, any and all items are addressed to the best of our knowledge.
Yep, and it's maybe, you call it an open book fashion. The environmental reports that have generated so far today have been shared. His information about what he did when he acquired the property has been shared. The purchase agreement now specifies that he will make available any contractors, any individuals that were involved with the property under his watch for interviews and evaluation with Braun InterTech, and agree to entertain more mutually acceptable due diligence if the Braun InterTech report shows more should be done. Now, it doesn't guarantee that he'll agree, but it does have in there that he would agree with the city or consider with the city additional due diligence.
Kent, should we hear an update from Mr. Erickson regarding the negotiating?
I think there is one point here that maybe is just a little bit different than what Kent just said, and I believe that the indemnification for something that might be found on the site that Mr. Chaney was not aware of, but occurred, but was caused by somebody else, is valid as an indemnification from him. But there's a limit of his liability to $250,000, and then the city would have to make an effort to see if there was grant money that could be utilized to offset that money, or if there was anything else. The reality is, is that Mr. Chaney himself did nothing with the property. People salvaged items within there. So, from the perspective of the buyer, being able to interview each one of those contractors or individuals or property managers to determine what went on with the salvaging operation puts those contractors at risk, first of all. And second of all, if they are describing their actions, then we would look into testing areas if somebody said, well, we did something over here. Then, of course, you'd investigate that to determine if something was there or not. I think the agreement is significantly better than in that aspect than any of the ones we've had before because of the ability to interview each one of these people and then conduct Phase One, expand the Phase One that was done to include that information. So, I do think that there's going to be much better information as to any risks that might be associated with the property. The positive, the other positive was sharing in the cost of the due diligence. Mr. Chaney's at risk just as much as anybody else is on it. So, I think, and we've experienced so far cooperation from him. From my standpoint, I think the revisions that were made are very beneficial for, not only them, but beneficial for the city to really understand what they're getting.
Anyone have any questions of Mr. Erickson or Mr. Matson? I would entertain a resolution before we have a discussion on the matter. Is there a resolution approving the city entering into a purchase agreement for the former dairy property?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Darren. Second.
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom.
Discussion. Discussion in the past, if anyone has anything else?
Yeah, where are we going to get the money to do this?
The $33,000?
No, the 2.9 million.
Well, we have gone over the pro formas in the past. I don't think we're probably going to go over the pro formas tonight, but I'll just leave it, you know, if we want to refer back to the, we had four different pro formas that we went over, it was five weeks ago, I believe now, before the last time that pro formas were discussed. But in the, just to summarize, I guess, for the public's benefit, and anyone on the negotiating team or anyone involved could help me out, but of the, I think it was 2.5 was the last estimate that we had for the total cost of the acquisition and the demolition of Greenfield. $600,000 obviously comes from the, from the LCCMR funds, and then the acquisition of the, I'm sorry, ultimately, the sale of the property at, was two point, it was right at 2.5 million in the last, and there was one caveat that you ran, a couple of different versions of. Steve, do you want to just talk to that briefly? Yes.
Go through that. Get to the stuff that we did before here. The initial, or the original pro forma suggested 2.9 million dollars as the cost of acquiring the property, demolishing the buildings, cleaning up the asbestos and so forth. And that assumed a 28.8 acre site. The second rendition of this corrected that number, so it was 2.7 million, not 2.9 million because of changing in some of the language of the purchase agreement that put the obligation of removal of the chemicals that were in the building, plus American cleanup back to the seller. So, that reduced it to 2.7 million. Of that, $600,000 would be coming from LCCMR. That put the number essentially at 2.1 million. There were a number of different scenarios of recapturing that money. If the question is, where is that money going to come from today? I can't answer that. If the question is, where will that money come from in the future? The money will come from the sale if the city decides to redevelop the balance of the property. The money will come from the sale of the property at that time, and then the benefit is the property tax that will be generated from it. That's as much as I can talk about.
So, I think that I...
The, getting back to the real estate taxes on that, we're not going to realize that for 20 years.
Well, I don't know what the period of time is, but it's not going to be immediate.
Whoever would build on it, if they're going to build multi-housing developments on there, will either use TIF or tax abatement. There hasn't been anything built in town without that for multiple housing.
I don't believe that there's been a comparable site in the city of Fergus Falls like this that would have the river frontage that's been available, that has the buffer zone, that has the trails on it. So, to me, whether you utilize TIF or not, to me, the site's good enough, you shouldn't have to use TIF on it. So, that's a debate.
I think going over those pro formas, they've changed, and those, we don't know what those numbers are going to be. I think we all agree it's going to be a number of years before the site would be developed and what those numbers are. But I think there's, so whether or not we're going to get dollar-for-dollar sale back out of it, I think personally, I think we need to look at it as an investment. We've talked about the river for a long time. Here's a property, we have a willing seller. Those of us, I think we've all seen the property, we understand the beauty, and at some point, if we're going to redevelop this river in our downtown quarter, I think we need to take the action to do it. There's $600,000 from the state. Is the timing perfect? Probably not. But you know what? We have a willing seller, we have $600,000 from the state, and I want to see us take a step towards doing what we've talked about doing with redevelopment of the river. I think we've also talked about doing the due diligence so that we know when we make that ultimate decision, whether we go forward with that $2.9 million project, do we have all the information that we need of what is buildable on the site? And we've authorized the $66,000. Now, we have the seller agreeing to do a joint due diligence with us. I think that's going to, as both Kent and Steve mentioned, it's going to give us better access to the information that we actually need to find out what that site is and what we're able to do with it. So, that's the way I'm looking at this, is I believe those pro formas, to a certain extent, I think that the information is the best that we have at the moment, but at some point, we're going to have to make an investment if we're actually going to do the things that we talk about doing. Justin?
Well, just to add to that, I think too, you know, Rod brought up a point earlier, and we've talked about this in the past. I mean, we have a lot of land that we potentially could look at for sale for, you know, shifting our assets to the river and selling other land that we've had in, you know, for a long time. And I don't know the value of the land that we own and what is saleable, but it'd be nice to get that piece. And I think, you know, going into this agreement isn't saying we're purchasing it. There's, it sounds like there's as many outs as we need, but it'll not only give us some due diligence on some possible funding sources for it as well, so.
And to add one more as well, like we talked about in the different pro formas, between 10 and 16 acres worth of trail that has the potential to be paid for through legacy funds, what is the value to that to our community? I think we need to ask that as well. So, Tom, and then Jim.
And since this, you know, the action we're taking tonight isn't committing us to purchase the property, the way I look at it is that we don't know enough to say yes to the project, but we also don't know enough to say no to the project. And this step tonight would give us the information we need to make that educated decision.
Jim, go ahead.
And I guess what I'm looking at is somebody has to cash flow this thing. So, are we going to bond for it? You know, so that's $2 million of bonding that we're looking at. We're also looking at this next year of bonding to do more work on our streets in town. $2 million worth of bonding is $138,000 onto the tax rolls. That's 2.5% increase for every person in town. You're looking at another 1 or 2 million, that's up 5% maybe, that we're going to have to increase taxes just for that. And it's just another thing that adds on, and I'm concerned.
I hear your point, Jim. I would say this, from my perspective, if we do look at this as an investment, that we're going to recoup some of those costs with the sale of that land, not just through property tax increase, or increased property tax revenue, but actually with the sale of that land, I think we do have the capacity to, and Bill can speak to this more, but I think if it's a short-term investment, well, we do have the short-term ability to do inter-fund loaning within our, within our, within our city. But the second thing is, if you look at other communities that are doing these developments, they use, they use their half-cent sales tax for more than just, just the library projects. They're able, they're able to do multiple projects at the same time, they're able to capitalize on those revenues coming into the city. So, I think that's also something, when we had the mayor of St. Cloud here, look at the different projects they're doing. They're doing multiple projects with that same half-cent sales tax. The voters have given us the opportunity to use that sales tax. If we're going to use it on just a library, obviously, we'd have to talk to the voters before we make any of those decisions. But there are other communities out there that are using that half-cent sales tax for more than just a single project over, you know, five, six years, three years' time.
But there's a number of years before we can do that. We have to get the library paid for before we can do that.
What I'm saying is there's other communities that are doing, they're doing multiple...
No, I, no, I understand that. I understand that. I'm just saying it's a number of years before we can bring that back to the voters again.
Scott?
I agree totally with Jim, but I'm going to vote no. And the reason I'm voting no is our engineering department now is overloaded. We just bombarded them with enough things with the RTC. Now, we're doing the landfill, the street projects they want to get done by the end of the year, and he's got 120 days to work with Braun and to get this together, and I just don't think it's, he's not going to do his, it's going to, all three projects are going to suffer because of it, I think. I think, that's my opinion, that's why I vote no.
Good, thank you, Scott. Any other thoughts, are we ready for the question?
Just, could I, just wanted to go on record so that people here in the public sphere, that you can study about these projects. And I've sent out to every council member, including Mr. Fish and Mr. Rachels, that if you study the projects that are done, invested on the river in Minnesota and Wisconsin over the last two decades, that every dollar of public money invested returns 2.1 dollars. So, you ask where the money's coming from. This isn't like buying a piece of property or buying, or buying BJ's for a song or something. This is a long-term investment, and you have to think of it this way. A long-term investment in the future of Fergus with a coal-fired plant that's closing, and I've yet to hear, and I just want to say this out of respect, but still, I've yet to hear a positive option, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Rachels, on what are you going to do to replace that 300,000 loss that we're going to have? How much is that a percentage every year on the taxpayers? If we don't take the money from the LCCMR and build a trail, half million dollars a mile, and increase the value of that property and get riverfront activity, what are you going to do, and what are you going to say 10 to 20 years from now when we're like Elbow Lake? And everyone's surpassing us, we don't have recreational opportunities, we're not using the opportunity we have. So, I'm just saying, for the record, that every dollar invested in these projects, the studies show, and I know some people don't like to do research and don't like to study stuff, but that just happens to be, you know, my curse. 2.1 to 1. So, take the 2.5 million we're going to invest, let's say, and make it over $5 million. Yeah, it won't be tomorrow, but we're in a financially sound, you know, thanks to Mr. Somnor and the past policies. But this isn't something we can just save our way out of. We have to be creative, and we have to keep up with other communities. So, I think the council is going to vote yes on this. I'm going to vote yes on it, obviously. I've worked on it a lot. I believe it's the future of the city, and it's going to help us offset what we're losing on Otter Tail Power. And so, I hope we don't give into fear that we look for hope, and we realize we can do something, we put our mind to it.
And, Your Honor? Just to go back, if we, if we, you know, kick it down the road...
Your honor, just to go back, if we, if we, you know, kick it down the road, you know, to give our engineer a possibility to do it, that's where I'm at. But just like Rod says, we did very well financially. Potentially, now, we're gonna lose 300, $300,000, we're gonna add on this 2.5 million dollar process in, in that same time period. And if it doesn't start generating money, it's gonna be a, a load to our tax, to taxpayers for about five or six years, or whatever. And that's what I'm looking at. I just think that we're, we're going on a path that we have, you're right, we gotta find something where that 300 grounds will come from, but I don't think that we need to overload $2 million on it to help them down the road. I just, it's my, that's my-
I think there's valid concerns-
Let's just call for a vote.
There's valid concerns on both sides. I think everyone's said their-
I'll call for a vote.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pepper.
Yes.
Fish.
No.
Rachel.
No.
Ruffer.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. And again, there's, there's valid concerns on both sides. I just like to, you know, we've been talking about this project and this property for a long time. This is not the end, it's, it's a beginning, but it is a first step, and I think that every, every good journey begins with a- First step. And I just wanted to say to the negotiating team, 'cause there's a lot of people with a lot of different views on this, that got to the point where we are tonight, to, to get a deal that was acceptable. So Brian Yvaro, Bill Somor, Andrew, Kent, Steve, Chris McCon, Anthony, thanks you guys for the job of the negotiating team. Steve, thanks for all the extra work on this. And Rod, thanks for bringing this up originally. I don't think we would have this discussion if we hadn't gone out there, and some questioned your timing, including me at times. But with that 600,000 LCCMR, that's, I think, what led us to this special day. So thank you to everyone involved in this project. I am excited. I think this is a start of a, many good things to come on the river. That being said, is there any other new business to come before the council? Our next meeting will be two weeks from yesterday, on the 18th of September, 4:30, at the Committee of the Whole, followed by the City Council meeting.